Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to open this January tenth, twenty twenty-three, Clark County School Board meeting by nominating or making a motion to approve Candy Mustaine as our District Four School Board Representative. And I would like a second. If I could have one please say it. Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Any questions or comments? Okay, all of the favors say aye. Aye. Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot. We have a Zoom member. We have a Zoom member. So my vote would be aye, Ms. Perkins. Could we have a... Aye, Mr. Freeman. Aye. Mr. Paul? Aye. Miss Hutchinson? Aye. Mr. Jones? Aye. Thank you very much. Congratulations. At this point, we will transition into our new board members or newly elected board members' oath with our new council. Ms. Governor.
Well, welcome, Mr. Jones and Ms. Mustaine. Congratulations to each of you. You will be taking your oath of office. Unless that you vote, or all three of you, would be after me, if you do this in unison. I solemnly swear or affirm...
I solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Indiana...
The Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the laws of the United States in Indiana.
And the laws of the United States in Indiana.
I will faithfully execute...
I will faithfully execute.
The duties of my office...
The duties of my office.
As a member of the board...
As a member of the board.
Of the school trustees...
Of the school trustees.
Of Greater Clark County Schools...
Of Greater Clark County Schools.
...who don't want me out.
So don't we got?
Thank you.
Thank you. We should have seat handshake coming. And outside point. Okay, at this point, I will call this meeting to an end. And, Ms. Markowski, would you note that all board members are present except for Teresa Perkins, who would now be assuming due to health issues? Would you all please stand with me and say aye?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this point, we need to introduce our board officers. We will start with the president. Do we have a nomination for the president? I don't think I know about the president. Thank you, Mr. Jones. We have a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Any questions, comments, arguments? Okay, all of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Golly, this is gonna be a long night. Mr. Freeman, Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Ms. Freeman?
Yes.
Ms. Mustaine?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Ms. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Next, I would like to nominate Teresa Perkins as the vice president. And I will vote yes.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson. I will vote yes. I think we go to Mr. Freeman. Yes. Ms. Mustaine?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Ms. Hutchinson?
Yes.
And Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this point, we need a nomination for a secretary.
Oh, Ms. Perkins?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to nominate President for Secretary.
Well, thank you very much. I will second that. Any questions, comments? Okay, I vote yes. Ms. Perkins?
I vote yes.
Ms. Mustaine?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Ms. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. At this point now, we move on to the approval of the agenda.
I will be ready to...
Just...
Okay, okay, they told me to go to the end, but that's fine.
That's a difference.
Oh, nice.
That's a difference.
Okay, well.
This is the treasurer and deputy treasurer. This is the deputy treasurer and then the CFO.
Okay, so, Board, do I have a motion to approve Laura Newberger for CFO as treasurer? I'll make that motion. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Any questions, comments? I feel very fortunate to have her, so.
Same thing.
I, my vote is yes, Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Ms. Mustaine?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Ms. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Thank you so much. The next would be the approval of the deputy treasurer.
Ms. Mustaine.
And, Board, do I have a motion to approve Ms. Kayla as deputy treasurer?
I would agree with just Kayla.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Mustaine. Any questions, comments? Okay, I vote yes. Ms. Perkins?
I vote yes.
Ms. Perkins? Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Ms. Mustaine?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Ms. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Perkins? Okay. Yep, Board, I'm glad we moved. We approved the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson. Any questions or comments? Okay, I vote yes. Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Ms. Mustaine?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Ms. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Perkins.
Did you... What's that?
Oh, we're speaking.
That's okay. I like it. Okay, so we approved the agenda. Okay, approval of the minutes from previous meetings. Board, I move that we approve the minutes from previous meetings. Ms. Hutchinson, seconds. Any questions or comments? Perkins. I vote yes to that. Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Ms. Mustaine?
Mustaine.
Thank you. Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Ms. Hutchinson?
Yes.
And Mr. Jones?
Yes.
All right. All right. Next, we are very fortunate. We have a presentation this evening with Ms. King. Evidently, there's an outside. Did you bring your own dog with you? That was very nice.
But we're very fortunate. I think it's a program where the county needs to see it
all, but when you hear what the content is, we have, you know, Judge Jacobs here with us, Ms. Barb Anderson. They work really hard. They meet every Monday to accomplish something that's gonna be very, very important in our community. So, Ms. King, if you'd like to come up and give a little bit of a presentation, all three of you, ask exactly what our county cares is about and what you maybe see future for Greater Clark County Schools, and I sure would appreciate it. Thank President Bud Walter, Coach.
Thank you very much.
So I'm Brad Jacobs, Judge of Clark County, too, to the Drug Court. So all I see every day is felony drug cases. And clearly, it's the same felony drug cases over and over. So when they might need to join Clark County Cares, it's a way to get in front of some of these issues and bring some more awareness and bring some more money, which will be part of that, and bring more participation to try to prevent the drug use and to treat the addicted person instead of just punching. So I thank you all for everything you do, and I know we're waves of these under better for us for the presentation for drug action. So I want to thank you guys personally for that and for all the cooperation we've had. I don't think we've ever had much pushback at all from anybody that we've asked from you guys. So thank you very much. I'm working to keep this street as possible. So I'm gonna stick back, but if any of you guys ever have questions, want to come see me personally at the board house, get to be admired or something like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Barb Anderson. Clark County Care started in 2015 in response to the opioid crisis. We had ninety-seven deaths in Clark County. And that was horrible. People we knew, people we didn't know, family members. So we called the meeting on a very snowy January night. Seventy-five people showed up, and they decided that we should do this. So since that time, for nine years, every Monday we meet, every year, we sponsor a week where we educate the community at large, but throughout the year, we carry on special events. When we started, there were three primary providers: Life Springs, Turning Point, Serenity House, and Wellstone. Today, there are probably twenty-eight providers throughout the county with people who have built homes sporadically so that no one will fight that. And it's really grown the service delivery system. But what it's done is, in a bigger way, is changed the way that providers do business because they communicate more openly with each other now. We're all at the same table. We plan together. We move together. And we're not a nonprofit, so we're not competing with each other. Our strength is in the fact that we are an organic group, and we are committed to this issue. So, and we couldn't do that without supporting people like you. So we really want even more participation because we feel like the schools are where we need to go to pull in what's happening currently with younger people and drugs. So I'm gonna turn it over to Carolyn now.
Thank you, Ms. Agent.
I'm Carolyn King, and in two thousand and fifteen, Barb was talking about the overdose deaths. And one of them was my granddaughter, Raven, who was living in Clarksville, was twenty-one years old, beautifully talented, musical, artistic. We had no idea she had a problem with heroin. And so it was kind of a shock to us. And so she was one of many -- we were one of many families being affected that year. So that's where Barb wrote a column kind of in the News and Tribune about what was happening in Scott County, which ironically, I was helping with the crisis they were having up there when, just about the time that Raven died. And she was saying, this could happen in Clark County, too, the HIV crisis and other things. So that's where we got together and started sharing and realized people all across the community were dealing with this issue. Community leaders, the average person, you know, grandparents, parents, children whose parents lost their children. I know the school is very aware of that because they have a lot of grandparents raising kids. So we really just started meeting together. We have health officers. We have legal. We have treatment people. We have people in recovery. Everyone's welcome at the table. We Zoom twice a month, and we meet in person on the other Mondays to do planning. So some of the results from this have been increased Narcan availability. We helped educate law enforcement, EMTs about Narcan. We have a dispenser that's at Clark Memorial Hospital, one of our partners put in there, that has freely dispensed three thousand units in the past year of Narcan from people who've come into the hospital. This is saving lives. We've also brought, I'd say, hundreds of thousands of dollars to the county, to the health department, to Life Springs, to help with treatment programs because what they see is a community working together. And they will give the money where they think it's going to be useful. So we started in two thousand and sixteen, Drug Facts Week, and it's a week-long event where we provide a bunch of information. We usually have a keynote speaker. This week, here, we're going to have Beth Macy, who wrote the book Dope Sick. Some of you may have seen her series on Hulu. And she's written a new book, which talks about how a community, how communities find solutions. Because you can't just deal with it afterwards. You've got to deal with it in prevention and things like that. So we have an annual report to the community, which will be the Monday night, February sixth. Dr. Azal will be there. Chief Kavanaugh will be there. Beth Keeney, the head of Life Spring, others will be talking about where we are right now in our community. We have an evening with law enforcement. We have people talking statewide what's going on. And our wonderful court, you may not realize yet, but it was four problem-solving courts now that are working with people and transforming lives in Clark County. We're talking about second chance employment opportunities on Wednesday for HR people and lawyers. We have Beth Macy on Thursday. And we have the director of the Indiana Division of Mental Health, Jay Chadry, is talking that night at the hospital, talking about the crisis. They did a commission recently and really saw mental health as a crisis in Indiana. And you may be aware that Indiana is like fifty in ratio of counselors to students and the whole... Yes. I mean, mental health crises, especially after COVID, that increased. I know, I'm talking to, you're totally aware of that, I'm sure. So anyway, on Friday, we were having a movie called The Addict's Way, which will talk about a family who had lost a son to an overdose and how they kind of connected with the person. It's a redemptive story. The person who sold him the drugs and when he was in prison and kind of helped to work with him. And then Saturday, and this is something we particularly want with schools, we want to look at prevention. And we did an event in Charlestown last spring, I think, for a Family Fun Day. We're doing an event in Jeffersonville at the Vision Center, just with community, what's going on, what's good for kids here. We'll have various community organizations, have games and food and giveaways to children because that's how you do protective factors. And then we always end with a candlelight vigil at the Big Four Bridge. And we read names. And just whoever wants to give us a name to read, to remember, whether it's somebody who's died from an overdose or someone who's in the throes of it. So that's our week, and hope that you all participate in it. And we're trying to get the word out the best we can. The News and Tribune usually gives us some really good coverage on it. We'll be livestreaming some sessions. We can't do it with Beth Macy, but that's what we particularly want to have. We're doing it in partnership with schools. Thank you very much. We can't livestream that because she's, you know, official celebrity. They make money off of her, you know, as far as her cameras. Anyway, but it is free. We have wonderful sponsors. Every year, we've got Clark Memorial, we've got the schools, we've got Life Spring, we've got Clarksville, Jeffersonville City, various others. So, but we really, partnering with the schools is one of our toughest things because your people are so busy. You really are. We understand that. And, but we want ways to have more inroads with schools because your field affects the holidays. So I appreciate the chance to talk today and hope that some of you will take advantage of this opportunity.
Thank you. If you don't mind, I can ask you just a couple questions. Beth Macy, is that there? That's, I think she's here during our highest of weeks, isn't she? The ninth or the tenth?
What's the date? She's here on the ninth.
Sorry, I'm worried.
All right, that's not it.
NWA here. Or, yeah.
In my, well, I mean, NWA's.
Yeah, I knew there was some. But I guess what I was hoping is there would be some way that we could get, if we can, a counselor from every school, perchance. Not all, just one. And maybe this year, we could get a counselor that I know it's asking a lot to take maybe one of their personal days to go see that so they could at least bring some information back. And maybe we could do something in the future a little more. But that's why I wanted to try to get you here, you know, as early as I could so you could see what was going on and we can kind of get that out there. But...
I hope so because it's lunch. And she's gonna speak for an hour and then book signing. So, you know, hopefully.
Yeah.
It's a simple way.
Yeah, you know, that's right. But I just, you know, it has affected everybody. It's really important. So I mean, if we don't address it now, you know, we're not paying attention. Thank you.
We do need RSVPs for that. It is free, but to know how you can. Needles to tell everyone, I'm hard, but we do.
Sure, sure. All right. Thank you very much.
Does it...
Yes, sir. Sure.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay.
Yeah, we can, we can.
Good, good. I like the name, Judge, and Barbara, and Carolyn, the community, like, you know, the firm, and Carolyn, and their principal, and they've been at this terrible point. And they don't just work with the people after their mission, which a lot of, you know, that's a big thing for that. But they look at the root cause, and that's where I think we have to go. And I think that's what they're doing. And I would add to what you said, John. I hope we can get at least one counselor from each of our secondary schools. I know Barbara said earlier today, we're not gonna let you in. Well, we don't have counselors, but I hope that we can get a support from all of our secondary schools and maybe more to get this message. And the first, like you said, John, we've all been touched by this, and some of it in others, and in our community. And we can even fix this here. They've got to love all of us. So thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. I don't feel like you have to be seated in here. There's no more hold down than we talk today. Okay, next item would be the consent agenda. Board, do I have a motion? Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson. I'll second. So I would like to vote yes. Ms. Perkins, you vote.
I will yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. I did not ask for any comments. I have a comment, but that's okay. I want to hurry up your solo act. Ms. Hutchinson, would you please do yes to Bill?
I would love to. I do want to point out that I pulled Sam and Sonia Gardner, five hundred dollars for a keyboard, Franklin Square. This gardener used to be a teacher with us. I think she's still my teacher. She's a very talented grandmother. Also, Pat Harrison from Remax, an espresso machine for Jeff Pie. Please invite me, Jeff Pie. I love espresso and coffee. Wellston, Washington State, thank you, with a thousand dollars for therapy now to be in Washington. The rest of those, oh, perfection group, I'm sorry, with card. The rest of those, that make up that eleven thousand, almost twelve thousand dollars, came from our education, our station.
Wow.
Look at that. Five hundred dollars, Robotics Club, staff fund, creative classroom grants, which are amazing. Vex Robotics Choir, it's good cheer check. There's another one for their, for the Pride account. Robotics, again, lots of robotics. I mean, that's a way to like really rip kids that, you know, don't maybe enjoy school once they get in their start building. So that is huge. Thank you guys so much. That's amazing. I move that we accept these gifts of building, the amount, eleven thousand, nine hundred, seventy-four dollars.
Awesome. I have a second. Second. Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Any questions, comments? Therapy Dogs. Does anybody know anything about them?
They're amazing. Dogs on their own are incredible.
They all have that.
They just make you, you can't be mad around a dog, especially because they're cute.
That's right.
But dogs are cute.
Unless you step in some.
Well, yeah, that's true. But then they're like, oh, I'm sorry, you know.
That's right. Okay. Are you gonna, I vote yes to this. Ms. Perkins?
She's on mute, but she said yes.
Yes. I don't, not there, John, but yes.
Mr. Freeman, yes. Thank you, sir. Ms. Mustaine?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Hutchinson?
Yes.
And Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Thank you very much. All right. What's our next move here? Oh, actually, Ms. Governor, conflict of interest.
All right. Good evening, Board. Members of the Greater Clark County School Board Trustees are required to complete and file conflicts of interest disclosure statements if you have a relationship or community area interest with the school corporation. This is required at any time throughout the year when a potential conflict comes up. But procedurally, we always start off the new year going ahead and filing them in case you have something that you know about. This completed statement has to be submitted to the board and approved by your vote without a vote of the person making a disclosure. However, in the past, we've made a very fault for the board to go ahead and acknowledge that each member that's stating from your own conflict of interest disclosure form, and so we walk and vote together. We did have two conflicts of disclosure forms filed, Ms. Mustaine, Mr. Jones, but you both can vote along with the rest of the board as well.
Board, do I have a motion of approval, the conflict of interest disclosure statements? I just need a motion.
I move to approve it.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Paul. Any questions or comments? I know it was kind of tough. Okay, I vote yes. Ms. Perkins? Still needing to interview.
I'm sorry. Yeah.
Yes. Ms. Mustaine?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Ms. Hutchinson?
Yes.
And Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Perkins. Okay. Next move, we got a memorandum of understanding with Beautiful As You Are.
Good evening, Board. The GCCS Education Foundation recently applied for the Impact One Hundred Southern Indiana Grant, which is a highly competitive grant opportunity available to Southern Indiana nonprofits in partnership with the Community Foundation of Southern Indiana. Foundation executive director, our very own Emily Oliver Jones, and BAYA CEO, founder Tish Frederick, were selected as one of three finalists for the grant. As a finalist, they presented their proposal of putting Baya Programming in every middle and high school in Greater Clark to the Impact Southern Indiana membership. After the member vote, they were chosen as a recipient of one hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, the largest grant our education foundation has ever received, to support this very vital programming for the students of Greater Clark. BAYA, which stands for, it's an acronym for Beautiful As You Are, is a nonprofit organization that was created to give a safe place to girls to talk and participate in fun, interactive, self-esteem-building activities while having fun with other girls. Beautiful As You Are is creating a world where young people can learn how to better, be better leaders, entrepreneurs, and servants with high self-esteem and purpose. The mission of BAYA is to encourage, inspire, and develop youth to find their inner voice impacting families and communities everywhere. In partnership with the Educational Foundation, BAYA will be providing onsite programming in all of our Greater Clark middle and high schools. Our partnership should enable GCCS to offer an additional resource to support and support system to our students. The Educational Foundation will serve as a liaison and administrative support between BAYA and GCCS. The purpose of this MOU is to create a mutual line of communication and support between BAYA, the Educational Foundation, and Greater Clark County School Corporation. This MOU has been reviewed by a workout paper for accuracy. It is recommended that the Board please approve the MOU to BAYA.
Thank you. Board, do I have a motion?
I move to approve the, I'm gonna run the last round with a, yeah.
Thank you. Ms. Hutchinson, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Mustaine. Any questions, comments? This wonderful...
I, yeah, I have the privilege of volunteering with the, uh, Tish. And I was at their dinner where some of her girls come and spoke, and I was moved to tears. And I don't usually cry when I cry or ever since that medication I started. And I was moved to tears. And it was like, I was just like, I saw it nice. And it's really beautiful, just their journey. And it's gonna be amazing for our school. You're definitely not gonna regret it.
That's awesome. What else? Okay, I say yes. Or do I, Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
All right, it's okay. Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Ms. Mustaine?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Ms. Hutchinson?
Yes.
And Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Perkins. Yeah, you had no choice. It wouldn't matter what you... All right. That motion passes. There we go. Okay, thank you, Ms. Perkins, for your approach. Well, we're having a wonderful board comment time. Mr. Jones, do you have anything to add to this? And?
I want to say, I don't know if anybody else is in there, we did a lot of data, and we recently shared the graduation rates. And I just want to thank our superintendent, our admin team, our amazing teachers and parents out there that made it possible. Our graduation rates are amazing. I was talking to somebody about how wonderful our school district is and how like great, how like a good place we've become. And we're talking about how our test scores did. And I was like, but I know that we're serving our kids because they go on to do great things. And, you know, with COVID, everybody's scores are dipping or whatever, but really, that's... But really, that's a, you know, when they make it through and they go on and they should work for us or go to college or do trade school or just, or just even have dreams, you know, that's amazing. So, thank you to everybody.
Awesome. Mr. Paul?
Just a welcome for and salute to Ms. Mustang, our new colleague.
Yeah.
I'm sure she'll do well. Welcome to the Board.
Yep. Ms. Mustang?
Yes, I would like to say thank you to the Board for the opportunity to serve District Four. I've met several people the past week and it's such a welcome. And I have students here who appreciate it and look forward to working with all of you.
Awesome. Thank you so much for being here. Ms. Freeman?
Nothing to say.
Nothing to say, I'm gonna share anything that's wrong, okay? All right.
I mean, I got on a rag or anything.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes, again, I would like to welcome our new member, Tammy Mustang, and her husband who's down at the party, they're up there. Thank you for coming and supporting Tammy and the rest of us. And I apologize for the coughing, the cold, cold coughing and the dog barking, but, you know, what it is. So, I hope to be back at our next meeting for sure.
Thank you. I'm Amy Higginson.
Welcome, Ms. Mustang. I want to, you know, what Kay said about the graduation rates, really, you know, I have to give props to our principals, you know, in terms of, you know, during COVID, the two years of COVID, you can only begin to imagine what that was like as a high school principal, trying to track kids, trying to get kids caught up with the credits, trying to get them to finish their credits. And for our graduation rate to stay, you know, above ninety-three percent, and, you know, and lead the county and also, you know, lead this area, and graduation rate is very impressive. But, you know, our principals, our counselors at the high school did a tremendous job of tracking those kids, making sure that they were working with them, and making sure that they were staying on track to graduate.
Awesome. Ms. Perkins, okay. Board, I move to.
What? I move to adjourn.
I was gonna ask you, Board, if it's okay if I ask her to move to adjourn?
I'm gonna be adjourned.
Thank you, but I have a second. Five seconds. Any questions or comments? I vote for adjourn.
I.
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 Me, adjourn.